Good evening. Before I call a meeting to order, I just want to make the announcement that this evening we have two meetings. The first meeting is a regular session of the city council and the next meeting with a brief time for transition is with the Urban Renewal Agency, which was a regular session. So with that quick announcement, could I have a roll call, please?
Steve Clemens.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
John Bozard.
Here.
David Glave.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
And Justin Rock.
Here.
Okay, we've got an agenda. I don't think there's any changes. Robert hasn't mentioned anything. So we have a consent agenda with three items. The first is, first item is approval of a regular session meetings from February 2nd. And the next two items of the consent agenda are approving liquor license applications. One for local harvest and one for Smoke City, new place I haven't heard of. Unless account, any councils like to pull an item from the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept it as presented.
I don't want to go, I don't want to pull it. I just want to know where Smoke City is. I didn't know where that was either.
It's going into Willa Grocery Store.
Into where?
It's going into the Willa Grocery Store. It's a, it's a, it's a transfer of ownership.
Okay.
Willa Grocery, Willa Market.
Okay.
I move, oh.
Go ahead, Justin.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Justin and a second from Mary Ann. Roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemens.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
And Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Robert, public comments?
Mayor, we did not receive any requests for public written comments to go into the record.
Okay, I'm assuming Brett would tell us if we had somebody on the line or anything, but all right. No public hearings, no unfinished business. We have two items of new business. The first one is a resolution, a resolution, which is, it's an annual thing, right? For accepting citywide voluntary sidewalk local improvement district final study and report. And establishing a public hearing date. Now I need to kind of look at my notes real quick about this one. And do, just in terms of process and what we need to look at here. So give me a second, Kyle. All right, we're getting there. All right. So we're going to entertain public test. We're going to hear from you, then we're going to do, entertain public testimony and okay, go ahead, take it away.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, what you have is, as the mayor had said, this is kind of an annual thing. This is our staff report that tells you what work was done under the sidewalk LID during the last calendar year. Well, this isn't a budget year thing. This is a calendar year thing, a little bit different. So in the report, you'll see the, the description and the different types of improvements that were done over the course of the year. We had a pretty good variation last year. The total for the LID last year was around 16,250 bucks. That's get to, it's pretty standard for what we've been doing lately. About every year is around that price. From here, we'll go forward in adopting ordinance, which would then trigger finance to take over and start billing these people for the, the improvements in following that.
Just unmuting. Any questions for Kyle? So we're still, we're still doing a circle, kind of a rotation around the city and what's the next area coming up that we're going to review and assess?
I'm not sure. We'll do that next month when we establish this year's LID.
Okay, all right, cool. Thanks.
Yeah.
No questions for Kyle? Oh, wait a second, Mary Ann, go ahead.
How many people participated in it, Kyle?
You know, if I remember right, there was six different properties that participated.
Right. Than we have in the past, or is it pretty average?
It's pretty average. It seems like the cost of improvements is generally going up with everything else and the number stays about the same. So a lot of years, we get a lot of people who are doing driveways and doing some, some extra stuff here and there. So prices are staying.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Uh, so we entertain a motion on this item?
I move that the final study and report for the 2021 citywide voluntary sidewalk local improvement district number 21-066 be accepted and that the proposed resolution establishing the public hearing date be read by title only, put to a vote and passed.
I can.
All right, Mary Ann moved, made a motion, Justin seconded it. And I'd like the city recorder to read the resolution by title only, please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Le Grand, Union County, Oregon, establishing a public hearing date for the citywide voluntary sidewalk local improvement district number 21-066.
All right, you've had a, we've got a motion, second, a reading of the title. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemens.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
And Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, the second item of new business is appointment of citizens to landmarks commission. That commission is empowered by the city council and charged with reviewing projects with the downtown historic district and those involving historic landmarks and determining whether those projects are historically appropriate. This is a five member commission and there is two vacancies. So if there's anybody out there listening and be interested, please consider throwing your hat in. One of these vacancies is due to a termination of an expiration of a term and one from a resignation. So I'm going to nominate the one applicant and I move that Robert, Rod Nulenberg be appointed to the landmarks commission for a three-year term, which will expire December 31st, 2024. Comments or discussion? I need a second on that, I guess.
A second.
All right, council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemens.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
And Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Right, that concludes our regular business. We now have some updates and reports. Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo, updates?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and counselors. I got a few updates today. And it was our honor this morning to recognize Paul Hall with Elcor Media Group. He is retiring and then we felt he did a fantastic job. We're going to miss him dearly and we recognize him today at the meeting. The liaison designations were also set in stone. You guys are stuck with me for one more year. If that's, yeah, great. I'll be here for the next year and business grants, the Rep Levy with the ARPA funds. Yeah, ARPA funds were, she gave a half a million dollars to Union County, which the other two commissioners, I had to recuse myself since I still do own businesses in, in Union County, that it's going to go to businesses that suffered through COVID. So those applications are on, online. If you go to our website or just give us a call 541-963-1001, so you get those applications. So any businesses that qualify, I really urge them to, to apply. And another good news, 50th anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program is happening this year. The senior center meeting their days is fantastic. They're going to have a little party to be determined. So we recognize them with the proclamation this morning as well. So I will let you guys know when that party is. I think it's a fantastic program and hope it keeps going strong at the senior center there. The other thing too is a short session is going to wrap up on Monday. Sunny Dye is Monday night and I don't want to jinx any of the money that we're getting, but there is some money you received quite a bit. Well, I'm sorry. Hopefully we'll be receiving quite a bit. Fairgrounds, looks like we may be getting a million dollars. I was hoping for 2.5, but I'm not going to look a gift horse in the mouth either. We'll, we'll make do and hopefully we could find the rest for the sewer project that we're trying to work on with the fairgrounds. There are a couple of other projects also, but like I said, this is like the first session that I have been through where there has been no walkouts or crazy things. So knock on wood, fingers crossed, hopefully everything goes through and you know, we got, we got something back in our, in our county, which is, which is a good news. But anybody have any questions?
Questions for Commissioner Scarbo? Thanks, Matt. And I don't mind seeing you around for another year.
No, it's not, it's not that the other two commissioners didn't want Le Grand, but we just kind of, it's been status quo and it's been working fantastic. And the communication between the cities has been, has been helpful. You know, I have Allen City, Somerville and Le Grand. Commissioner Andrews has Elgin and Emblor and Commissioner Beveridge has Cove, Union and North Powder. So the communication level, I think, has really improved.
Right.
Since, since we started this and you know, communication is key.
Yep.
Really is.
And you know, and all the time I'm, I've been on council, this is the first commission that has been regularly at council meetings. So I appreciate that and having you around.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And I hope, I hope to see you in person next time.
Yeah, I'll, that, we're working towards that. Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Staff comments? Sandra, you're, you're, we can, we can hear you, but I can't see you. I suppose that's, that's okay.
Okay, I can give you an update on candidates that are running if you'd like, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Um, for position one, Mayor position, we have confirmation that Justin Rock will be running and Matthew Miles. Position five, we have Molly King and Aaron Cooper. In position six, we have Denise Wheeler and then our second candidate is still being confirmed at this time. Position seven, we have Cody Vela, it's V E L A, and Corinne or Kareem Dudo. Those have all been confirmed as of about a half an hour ago.
So you're just waiting on, on confirmation from the county recorder's office, is that it?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thanks for that update. Appreciate it. Sandy? Any other staff comment? Looked like Chief Bell just lit up here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. I just wanted to give you a couple of updates from the police department. Just this week, we finalized updating an intergovernmental agreement that we have between the city and the county for, to, where the city provides public safety dispatch services to the county. We've been doing that for many, many years. But the most recent agreement was 1995. So we've been working on that for a while, just to get it updated, refreshed. And, and that embodies the formula that we use for billing that, that you guys hear from each spring when we go through our, our budget processes on what we build the county for dispatch services. So that's a win for us. We've, we've accomplished that and so that will be in file. The other thing is staffing updated, the police department. We have today, three vacancies in our police officer ranks. And, but we, good news is we tested today, had some positive results. So we'll be moving forward in the selection process. And it was heartening today with the number of applicants that are candidates that we had arrived and, and some good results. So I hope to report back to you soon with the names of some new hires. So anyway, that's all I have unless anyone has questions about the police department.
I see Gary's got his hands up. Go.
Yeah, I was just curious as to whether or not the, what did we call it? The monetary enhancement or had anything to do with the number of candidates you've gotten?
Well, it's a little early for me with labor law counselor to talk about any of the can't specific candidates, but it very well may pay off for us this go around.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Bell? Thanks, Chief. Any, any other staff comments? All right, city manager comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor kind of alluded to earlier, barring anything unforeseen, the state will lift the indoor mask mandate. And so when you meet in work session on the 14th of March, that'll be in person. Topic will be economic development strategy.
A big smile from Dave.
What, one of the things that you may have forgotten, but after retreats, you generally can kiss your Mondays goodbye. I don't know if you paid attention to the calendar that went out, but we're, we're looking at the 14th of March being economic development, the 28th of March will be a parks master plan. So those in the April council meeting are all intended to be in person. So excited about that. And that was all I wanted to cover. Thank you.
Hey, just checking my calendar to make sure I've got both those, those dates covered. Yeah, we're pretty full and through the spring for work sessions on Monday and then, and then they kind of let up a little bit in the summer. Thank you. And then they pick up again in the fall. So into counselor comments, I'm going to take you in order that I see you. Counselor Lillard? Any comments?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Glave? Nope. Okay, Counselor Howard?
No, not tonight, Steve.
Counselor Rock?
Actually, I do.
Okay.
Last Thursday, I got to meet with the Union County Chamber of Conference, got to meet the new director and his name is Scott Newman. Really nice gentleman. I am very eager and I think he'll do a good job. They actually have a whole new staff and so I'm, I'm kind of excited to see how they do. Right now, they're actually running at 275 members and their goal would be a new staff is 300 by the end of the year. So I hope they do well with it.
Good. Thanks for that, Justin.
You bet. Thank you.
Counselor Bozard?
I'm fine.
All righty, and finally Counselor Meesner? Can't hear you. You're muted. Oh, there you go.
I'm fine. Thank you. And this is one of the shortest meetings so far.
Yes.
I bet when we get back in person, they won't be this short.
Well, hopefully we can, we can palaver a little bit longer. And I have nothing for this evening. So just a reminder that we're going to take a very brief intermission. You know, a minute or two while we do some transitioning and then, and then we're going to come back as the Urban Renewal Agency. So I adjourn the regular session of the city council and we'll pause for a minute or so and, and then we'll, we'll come back as the Urban Renewal Agency. I'm guessing that's adequate transition time. If not, please let me know.
You're good.
Okay, so with that, I will call to order the Urban Renewal Agency regular session for March 2002, to March 2nd, 2022. I'm really glad that we didn't do this on February 2nd, 2022, because then there'd be lots of twos in there. Okay. And I will have a roll call, please.
Steve Clemens.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
John Bozard.
Here.
David Glave.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Mary, Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
And Justin Rock.
Here.
All right, all agency members, president accounted for. We have a consent agenda with a single item and that's approval of the regular session minute meetings, minutes from a meeting in October of 2021. We don't meet as an agency, agency very often. So with that, unless there's any changes to those minutes, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody want to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Justin and a second from Mary Ann. Roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemens.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner. And Justin Rock.
Yes.
All right, Robert, public comments? I'm guessing not. All right, no public hearing, no unfinished business, two items of new business. The first one is approving the recommended changes in the The first one is approving, uh, the recommended changes in the call for projects policy. Uh, Robert, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the agency. So, uh, when we're at the retreat, we talked about doing some tweaks to the call for projects program. Uh, we did convene the URAK and went through, uh, some housekeeping stuff, but also a couple of substantive changes. And so you have in your packet in legislative version, which essentially shows you in strike-through, uh, language, it's either moving or coming out, and then underlined, uh, the language that we're proposing. And I do have the ability to share the screen if anybody wants to see that as we walk through this. But I'll go ahead and, um, I'll go ahead and go through essentially what we talked about. Um, the first one is just in the purpose, adding, uh, the fact that we do want to uh, develop upper floor residential within the downtown. That's just an omission that should have been in the purpose. It's, it's a cleanup piece. Uh, the next one is in the general criteria and the ranking. Uh, one of the things that has probably been the most confusing uh, since we went to this new format was the community comment, which was worth fifteen points. And so we, we definitely want to, to pull that from the policy. Uh, and what we're recommending is to take those fifteen points and allocate those specific to development of upper floor residential in the central business zone. Uh, as we all know, housing is an area of concern for us. The urban renewal plan and project list does include, uh, provision for residential. Uh, so this would, this would make a couple of changes within the policy. The first is to actually provide an incentive for those residential projects. Uh, and the second is it would allow for them to actually be standalone. So currently, we require in the policy, if we're doing residential on upper floors, it has to be in conjunction with other project elements on the ground floor. And so that's the, that's the departure here. Uh, I don't know how many residential only in the central business zone we would see. Uh, but, you know, I, I do think in the URAK, uh, supports the concept of going ahead and taking the points that had been allocated to the, uh, community comment and moving them over to this. So I think this is a good spot to just kind of pause and see if the agency has any questions relative to this.
Any questions for Robert?
Seeing none.
I'm just, I'm just, uh, I'll, I'll comment. Um, I've always, uh, I, I agree heartily with the idea of removing the community comment. I, I wish there was some type of monologue or dialogue in there for the owners to give a chance to support it, but I think the way we phrased it and constructed it early on, it, it has just never been very effective for me. Um, and I, I really like the emphasis, uh, added to, uh, you know, above floor, above ground floor uh, residential, um, incentives. Um, we need some housing downtown. I, my only concern about that really is, is the parking issue. Um, and adding more residents downtown and, and their associated vehicles uh, could end up being a bit of a, a bit of a, you know, a thing in the, in the future as more and more cars there. I see Dave has his hands up. I'll turn it over.
Can I, can I jump in before we go to Dave?
Sure, sure.
That is one of the topics that the URAK touched on when we were discussing this. So the URAK is going to reconvene and have some further discussions about parking, uh, within the district.
Okay.
So, sorry, Dave?
Dave, go ahead.
So, Robert, and, and it's, it's possible, and I'm getting into this a little bit early because I, I think this is more section D, so I can postpone my comment till we cover that if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I was just about to jump into that. So in, in section D, uh, one of the things that there is just a, a separation of language to clarify that the housing can be, uh, on upper floors eligible for the funding. And also that it, uh, let me go to it. So in the central business zone, we, it would be allowed as a standalone project outside the central business zone for residential on the upper floors. You would still have to do it in conjunction with retail commercial on the ground floor. And so, uh, that's the portion I wanted to touch on, on section D for changes. So did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, the next one, next section that we're making some revisions to is, this is more on the process side under section G on the funding. Uh, the first thing that, uh, we want to do is to add language that makes it very clear that if you commence work without the required permits, you're not going to be eligible for the costs associated with that work. Um, and it, I don't know that there's one specifically where this, this has occurred. There's another one where we did have an issue. But just really making sure that not only do you get the permits that are required, but you also get them before the work commences. Uh, the next one is if you occupy the building, oh, I'm sorry, Dave, you had a question?
Robert, would, would you look at on page eight where the five is blocked out? I think we need to revise that paragraph. I, I can't read it and make sense of it.
Um, so you're talking about page eight?
Page eight.
What's the first one?
It says occupancy and or use of the building property that requires an occupancy permit without first receiving either an occupancy permit or a temporary occupancy permit shall be result in the contributions of the URA will be considered alone. You, you see the issue there?
Yeah.
I think we've got to clarify that language.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the, the B has to come out, so I'll just change that to shall result in. And, and this is one where we did have a situation where on a funded project, they actually occupied the property without an occupancy permit on new construction. But we didn't have any teeth, uh, beyond the normal building, uh, process. And I don't know that this will ever occur again, but this just does give us an added tool to make sure people are complying with what they need to. Um, and then the other one is closing what might be a loophole, um, just some clarifying language that essentially says, because we already say, if you apply for funding and you get it, and then you go after tax abatement, the local property taxes, that the funds convert to a loan that's due and payable immediately. Just adding some clarifying language that says if the use of the property is changed, resulting in the property not being subject to city property taxes within five years. Uh, just to make it really clear, because based on the return on investment to the district from those property taxes. And so it's only fair that if that property tax stream, uh, is impacted, that it should have an impact on the funding. Uh, this is not the federal tax credits or any of that stuff. This is just specific to the local property taxes that would impact the revenue stream, uh, to the agency. Uh, then we just added a little bit of clarification on making sure we're routing this to the right people. Um, oh, I do need to back up to one that I wanted to touch on.
See, Gary's got his hand up real quick, Robert.
Yeah. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, you, you can go ahead. Mine will, mine will wait after you're done.
Yeah, so the one thing that, that we do want to do is to scale back the maximum money that we can provide in progress payments from ninety percent to seventy-five percent, just so that we have a little bit of a bigger, um, holdback at the end. Uh, you know, fifty thousand dollar project, and you've paid them, you know, all but ten percent, there's not a lot of incentive to get them to, to finish it out. And so just rolling that back to seventy-five percent, that was just another, uh, change. Most projects get, uh, one progress payment, if any, and then close it out and they're done. So councillor Lord?
Yes, thank you. I had a question about projects where they wind up, uh, having or hosting a nonprofit. We decided we would be accepting of that some years ago, but I've become increasingly concerned, given that the overarching purpose of, uh, urban renewal is to generate tax revenue that eventually will go to the general fund. I have some concerns about allowing nonprofits in some of these projects which return no tax money. I don't know if this is the, the right, uh, time or topic, but wanted to get it out there.
So the way that the, the way that the policy is currently structured, the agency could award funding knowingly to a not-for-profit. The language that I've added, uh, would make a change that if a project comes to the agency as a for-profit venue with the anticipation of property taxes and a funding is awarded, and then the use changes to where it's now property tax exempt, we have a clawback where the funds would have to be returned to the agency. So I think it retains the ability for the agency to make a conscious decision to award funding under this program for a not-for-profit based on what they're doing and the value to the community. Um, but it also makes it clear that if you come in for a for-profit building, you have to save a property tax paying building for the duration, you know, for five years after you receive funding. Uh, if the agency wants to prohibit not-for-profits from receiving funding, then I think the change would have to be tied to the overall program. And we would get into the distinction between whether or not the use of the building by a not-for-profit actually does in fact turn the building into a tax-exempt property. A good example of that would be the Fire Museum. When the Fire Museum was only a fire museum, it was a, uh, tax-free building. Uh, when the use changes, where site A is in a portion of it, suddenly that changes the property tax system on that building. And so in the inverse, if, you know, we were to award funding to something that, that currently has retail or commercial in it, and then a not-for-profit went in there and, and bought it and owned it, and the conversion of use turned it into property tax exempt. Under this change, we have a clawback. It's not precluded at the beginning of awarding funding to not-for-profit. So I think I said that about twice.
The most recent one I'm aware of was, uh, location on Adams Avenue where we provided money to have it converted into uh, storefronts, and my understanding it has become a church. I don't know if that violated any concerns, policies, regulations, or not, but doesn't seem like what we had in mind.
Yeah, and, and on that one specifically, I need to take a look and see what, if anything, has changed with the property tax status for that, and whether or not the language we currently have would impact that. And let me go ahead and pull that language up just so you can see it. So I'm going to share my screen, and then I see that, uh, Nicole has her hand up.
Robert, while you're pulling it up, I'll just piggyback on that question. I imagine the property that Gary just referenced is also somehow related to that clause that I see farther down about needing to kind of have tenants on the line or a clear recruitment plan for tenancy, and maybe, maybe those are connected. I don't know. I'm asking, I guess.
Yeah, I think the intent with the recruitment plan is we've had, I don't know, maybe a handful of projects that were on vacant buildings. And in most cases, they already had a tenant identified that was going in. Oftentimes, it was actually the new property owner, but it was vacant. Uh, Orange Rhino would be an example of that. Uh, and so the, the change in language would make it clear if you don't have a commitment from a tenant, that you identify what your plan is and what your recruitment strategy is to get a tenant. So it's, it's, it's not necessarily linked to this. It's more about what's the certainty of what you're, what you're funding when you fund it. Steve?
So, so I, maybe this is a matter of semantics, but, and I'm, I'm looking, Robert, at the page that you have on the screen, and I think it's, it's part of the conversation, but the, the, the text in red says, if the use of the property, and to me, I mean, you, you, a property owner could change renters, and that change of renters wouldn't have an effect on property, uh, on property taxes per se. But the, if the, if the sale of the property, if the change in ownership of the property results in the property not being subject to property taxes. So I guess I'm stuck on the word use. Um, and is that, you know, is, do we want to be more specific? Because the use could change, but not the property ownership.
So, so two things. One, if you sell the property within the five years, it doesn't matter what the use was or will be, you owe us money.
Okay.
So we already have that clawback provision. A couple of years ago, we changed it to make the clock on that run not from first dispersment, but from occupancy.
Okay.
To give us a full five years. So change of ownership of the property, uh, that's already very clearly because we don't want flipping of houses, if you will.
Right, okay. I got you now.
The, and the reason that we're using the term use is it, it doesn't necessarily go to the ownership of the property. It goes, in some cases, to what the property is being used for. Uh, in some cases, it is the ownership. You know, when Grand Ron bought the property formerly owned by Hodot, that came off the tax rolls, and that was a pretty significant hit to the district. Uh, so I think this, I think this addresses the unknown change that, that causes us to not get property taxes that we would otherwise have received. It doesn't address, uh, Mr. Lillard's comment about should we have a provision that simply says no to not-for-profit? And so that's, that's all of the, uh, requested changes in revisions, and I'll be happy to answer additional questions. Uh, when we get to the point, the motion would be as amended because I took the word B out of that one sentence.
Anybody? Dave?
Robert, I, I go back. I, I think you need to amend it beyond just removing the word B. If you continue on in that sentence, you're going to have to rephrase that paragraph. Okay? Just, just a heads up.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make it cleaner.
Anyone else? Anything else to add, Robert?
I don't. I don't.
Okay. Uh, I'm, any, have we had any public testimony on this? Just checking, all right? Uh, agency discussion? Good questions from everybody, good clarification of things, no questions, no discussion? A motion?
I move that the Urban Renewal Agency approved the revisions as amended to the Call for Projects revitalization incentive program policy. As amended, I'm sorry. I guess I used that there.
Yeah, yeah, you got it in there. I heard it. So, okay, looks like Dave, so we had a motion from Mary Ann, a second from Dave to accept the revisions as amended this, this evening. Any other counsel, excuse me, agency conversations?
One correction, I think it was me that made the second.
Okay, sorry about that, Gary.
Unless you beat me in there.
I don't know. I saw Dave, I saw Dave just go back on mute, so.
I, I unmuted, but Gary, Gary got his voice ahead of mine.
All righty, all right. Uh, so with that, a last for a roll call vote, please?
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glab?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Uh, second item, new business is approving retreat summary and district managers' top priorities for fiscal year 2022, '23. You may recall that we set these, uh, these priorities during our council-agency retreat the end of January. As far as I can see, these priorities are identical to the ones that we set as a council. But there are some in there that are specific to economic development. So I'll let Robert take over and we'll move through it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the agency. So the one that really touches on economic development is simply to, to say we will continue to implement the Urban Renewal Plan and Economic Development Strategy as approved by the City Council slash Urban Renewal Agency. Fiscal management is also a component of, of the overall priorities. And then also in your packet, you had a copy of the retreat summary that kind of summarized what we talked about and what our upcoming actions are. You know, one of the things was to get together fairly quickly and just take a look at what our economic development plan strategy is so we can kind of make sure that we're all on the same page on what that looks like. And so that's what we're going to be doing on the 14th. And I'm happy to answer questions you have on either document.
Questions for Robert? Very straightforward from, from council meeting. No public input, I'm assuming? Council discussion? A motion?
I move that the city or the district manager's top priorities for fiscal year 22, '23 is discussed during the annual council retreat on January 25th, 2022, and outlined on the attached retreat summary be adopted as presented.
Second.
Oh, Dave got in there this time. It, it's going to be interesting when you're face to face and I can't see you. Uh, when we're at the diocese, I don't, I, I don't see people's reactions, but, but we will certainly hear each other, which is very good. So we have a motion by Nicole and a second by Dave. Any other comments? If not, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard? Gary?
Yeah, I said yes.
Okay, John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glab?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
And Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, district manager comments, Robert?
Uh, just a reminder with this hat on that you do have a work session to talk about economic development strategy coming up on the 14th.
Okay, were you going to have, we, we have any material prior to that, or are you gonna?
You will.
Okay, good, thank you. Nothing else? All right, uh, agency members in order of C, of sight. Pretty soon it will be left to right or right to left. Uh, in this case, it, Gary Lillard, any comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Great, David Glab? Nicole Howard? Justin Rock?
No, thank you.
Okay, John Bozart?
I'm good.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes, I just had a question. I was wondering, Robert, if, could you identify, or are, are any of these, of this, I'm looking at your February update. And I was wondering about the Call for Projects from 19, from 2019 and '20 that are, how many of those that are still in progress? How long do they have to finish those, those?
If you will give me a minute, I'll pull that up and take a look.
Okay.
I click on the right button, perhaps? Which year, Mary Ann?
I was looking at the 19, the 2019, '20. One is Steve's Outdoor Adventure. He still has, you've paid him, he had $75,000. You paid him $37,500. And then the other one is the Brickyard. They, they still have the, I believe, $40,000 left remaining.
Yeah, so for Steve's Outdoor Adventure, he still has some site work that has to be done, that can't be done until the spring. And so once he gets that last work done, landscaping and that sort of thing, we can make the final payment. So that one should be taken care of in this fiscal year. I need to have a, a conversation with Brickyard Lanes regarding the elements of their project and the timing. Because again, they're currently outside of the agreement, but we've been waiting for a definitive when they think they're going to get things done. And then the decision on whether or not to ultimately grant a release of those funds will rest with the agency. Because the, the timeframe for that project to be completed, I'm not comfortable granting the extension of multiple years and awarding those dollars. So that will come back to the agency for a final decision.
What remains to be done, Robert, on that one?
Most of it is related to the kitchen side of the operation. They have a temporary occupancy to operate the bowling lanes. But there's a, a fair amount of what was supposed to occur. I don't think they finished the exterior window trim that's part of the original project. So there, there are a number of components to that. I don't have an exhaustive list that I can point to right at the moment.
Anything else, Mary Ann?
I just have one other one, and I was just looking at, when I was reading through this the other day, it's the, the loans that were in the repayment phase of the loan program. And that was on the street number 24 on page, I don't know what page it is. Oh, God, get to the right one. Page 11 of your report. I was just wondering, when you were standing there near halfway point of the loan process, they will be eligible to apply for the forgiveness of the remaining balance. How many of them, how many, so three loans are in the repayments phase? And they're, and so I'm assuming, are they eligible?
Each, each one has a different term for their loan. And we had granted forbearance, essentially a pause during COVID that extended out essentially what we did. So say, for example, it was a five-year loan at the two and a half year point. If you had done certain things, you could get the, the forgiveness. We took that period of time of, of forbearance and just extended the end of the agreement. And as of right now, we don't have anyone that is eligible to take a look at that. We, we have one that maybe later on this year that could be eligible to do that.
Okay, okay. There's a couple more, but probably we'll call you on those other ones that I had questions on.
Okay, happy to answer.
Thanks.
Is that it, Mary Ann?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, and I have no comments, so that concludes the business for this evening. I adjourned the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and see you quite literally on the 14th. All right, have a good night, everyone. Take care.